Trying to look at various departments, five-year capital plan last year.
All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order now at seven oh nine. Please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. Can we have a roll call, please? Corinne, Bill Lopez.
Here.
Laura Madigan.
Here.
Don Kraft.
Here.
James Burge.
Here.
Kelly Keraman.
Yeah.
All right, we have a quorum and can move on to approval of minutes from June twenty-four. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Kelly. Do we have any questions for Corinne on those minutes? Hearing none. We'll move on to a vote. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Consideration of claims and sewer adjustments. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Don. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Corinne on our claims or adjustments? All in favor of approval, then, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Claims and adjustments are approved. Next, we've got petitions and comments from the floor. If you have anything you would like to address the council about, please approach the podium with your name and address and give us your comment. All right, I see no one approaching, so we will move on to reports. Clerk Treasure? Give me one second, sorry. Take your time. That was fast. But that was fast for the usual, making up for that lead start.
I got two quick things. First, I just wanna remind everybody that the website domain name, website address has changed from townofporter.com to townofporter.in.gov. I have noticed periodically there's some broken links that are popping up, so if anybody notices any, please let me know and we'll get them fixed. Second, there was a guardrail damaged in June, Waverly Road and Lincoln Street. We recently received a check for three thousand seven hundred dollars from the driver's insurance company. So those funds will be re-appropriated to MVH Miscellaneous Services. That's two-two-oh-one-oh-oh-one-three-six-five. I'll have to do an adjustment for that, and it has to be spent within twelve months to fix or repair.
It's scheduled to be fixed, and it was a nice insurance company to deal with for once.
Good. Oh, thank you, nice insurance company.
Normally you call, you transfer, call, transfer, call. Yeah, it's in the mail.
Good, nice.
You got it pretty quick.
All right, so it'll be taken care of this summer, then?
It's scheduled, if not next week, the week after.
Perfect.
And the way we do those, sorry.
That's right.
If the insurance, we track them down and find the insurance and they say they're responsible and they're gonna pay. We use a company to do that. It's easier on us to replace what was there. If we try and do it and then bill the insurance company, they want time cards, they want in and out for the labor, they wanna know everybody's hourly rate, so it involves a couple hours of paperwork to try and get less money from them. So if we can find somebody responsible, we just haven't done. And just a little explanation of why it's us sometimes and why it's somebody else.
I appreciate that explanation. Thanks.
That was it. I just wanted the minutes to reflect that that was gonna be an appropriation adjustment for insurance payment, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you so much, Attorney Mr. Willoughby.
Nothing new to update.
All right, appreciate you. Police Department, our chief is out today. Kelly, did you have?
I do, I have a couple things.
Thank you.
First is a reminder for this year's cookout with the cops will be on August eighth from four to eight p.m. at Hawthorne Park. And then a little Fourth of July review. All of our officers agree that this year's Fourth of July weekend was the smoothest and memorable history. Aside from foreseen, yeah, unavoidable traffic backups on forty-nine, the overall traffic and call volume was much-needed reprieve from years prior. They credit this impart to the private contractors, outside officers that assisted with traffic control in addition to the commitment and dedication of our own officers that put in long hours over the weekend.
Thank you.
What was the time of the cookout?
It's August eighth from four to eight p.m. at Hawthorne Park. It's a really amazing event.
All right, thank you for that update. Fire Department Chief Craig?
I have a few things. I received in the mail last week or beginning of this week, we received the 2024 Silver Award from Lexipool for our online training program and our records management. Lexipool is who we record all our training through. It's this extra service that actually Westchester Township covers with our port management software. And I didn't even know they had an award, so it was a nice little surprise that we got Silver Award for what we do through how we use that program and put it to work to train our firefighters, so that was kind of a nice little surprise. June stats, the month of June, we ran a hundred and nine calls compared to last year of a hundred and three, which brought us to four hundred and eighty-five total calls for 2025. This time last year, we were at four hundred and fifty-six, so we have already an increase on last year, which was our busiest year on record. And historically, the second half of the year is always busier than the first half. That was an average of three-point-six calls per day, an average of thirty-nine minutes on those calls. Again, that includes our time after we clear the scene, get back stationed, and put trucks back in service. It was a total of a hundred and eight hours and fifty-four minutes they spent on calls. The, one of the things I want to, well, I'll cover that later. Afternoons was our busiest shift with forty-nine calls in the afternoon, but I remember there was forty-one calls during the day shift. Monday is the busiest day of the week last month, and five p.m. was our busiest timeframe, the hour of five o'clock, I'm sorry. Important note, fifteen percent of the time, we were on more than one call at a time. Special note that once on the twenty-first, which this is the call, the weekend that we ran like thirty-some calls and we were on calls for nine-and-a-half hours straight, we were on two calls at one time. Or it happened, or yeah, we were on multiple calls at one time. We had a little break, and there was one point in time we were on four calls at one time that we were covering and spread out. A few days later, on the twenty-third, we actually had a time that we were three calls. So the weekends hit us with a lot of overlapping. We experienced that this last Fourth of July weekend, too. Most of those calls, seventy of them were in the Town of Porter, twelve of them were in Westchester Township, four of them were in Dune Acres, and twenty-three of those was assisting our neighbors on mutual aid calls. Fifty of them were medical assist EMS calls, eleven were motor vehicle accidents. We had nine dive team requests. I don't believe any of those last month resulted in any actual drownings, however. We did have some assists with rescues off kayaks and things like that, but I don't recall any of them having anything to do with actual drownings. Nothing else, any, no other significant numbers, just typical call responses. Part-time firefighters were staffed for the entire month with full crews of three, Monday through Friday each day. And our response time with the part-time firefire response station is one-point-seven-five minutes to get the truck out the door compared to our volunteers. That's a huge, huge difference. And I'm not trying to discredit the volunteers when I say that because they have to come from home. That's an automatic delay.
Right.
But having that time, which handled some major medical issues or major medical calls, semi-rollovers, fires, all kinds of different things that they went on, so that made a huge difference during that time. On that topic of the part-time firefighters, again, as I updated last, last meeting, I believe, so far it's going fantastic. The crews were even, they completely prepped all of the trucks for the parades. We took the trucks in, they did all the manual hard labor that the volunteers don't like to do, the washing, the waxing, and the polishing. The volunteers had to come in and decorate and shine some tires on, and they got to do all the fun stuff, go on the parade, sit at the festival. So yeah, that is still going tremendously. I think the one guy on station today fixed three different things, and the fourth one, we have to wait for a part to come in. So today was even a very productive day. They keep me busy, that's for sure. I'm gonna move on to the June, or I'm sorry, Fourth of July weekend. We're still, these are preliminary numbers as we're still sorting through all of the reports. But we had around twenty-one calls for the weekend. All in all, that's a pretty mellow Fourth of July weekend. I was, with the Fourth being on a Friday, I was expecting a lot worse, a lot busier. Sunday was very mild. Most of those were over the Thursday evening, Saturday timeframe. Out of those, that included two responses to mutual aid buyers, two requests for a search and rescue K-9, also an assisted PD for a separate missing person case, double drowning response in our area to Westchester Township. We did staff the part-time crew on an engine Saturday and Sunday. Saturday, it was phenomenal while we were handling all of the beach response stuff and small stuff at all times. And our firework detail, parade detail that we had at Dune Acres, at all times, we had a staffed engine that was in the town to respond to an emergency or a fire that would have happened in the Town of Porter, which was just phenomenal. Lowered the stress levels on the volunteers, made us be able to work safer and better and more efficiently during all of that. So that was just, just a great asset that we had during that time. The only other thing I have is a brief discussion, I guess, for guidance from the council. As I've spoke with some of you before, we are having a bit of a concern with the quality of service that we are receiving from the Porter Hospital EMS that is contracted to the county through our Porter County Boards, Commissioners, and the councils. Contract Porter Hospital provides us with ambulance service that provides to any of the areas that don't have their own ambulances, which is only a couple areas. We're covered under the EMS Station One, which is the only station of four that has two ambulances added. Contract requires five staffed ALS ambulances. Often are not meeting that requirement and currently are giving us a BLS ambulance, which is Basic Life Support, ALS is Advanced Life Support. Advanced Life Support can give you all of the medications that could keep your heart beating in the event of a heart attack, primarily one of those things, among many other things that administer any narcotics, and a BLS ambulance cannot do that. This weekend played testament to that. We did have a major medical call in the Town of Porter where my responding BLS ambulance was coming, had a fifteen-minute ETA, fourteen-minute ETA, which that was two minutes into the call. And it was a BLS Basic Life Support ambulance. I did not believe that our patient would, had severe enough symptoms that his life may require an ALS ambulance, which was requested, and the city of Portage graciously agreed to send us their ALS ambulance that got there in less than that fourteen-minute ETA and provided those life-saving measures and got him to the hospital. That's just one of the many issues that we are struggling with. I've been fighting this battle for longer than I care to admit. So Fourth of July, Five, Fourth of July, a holiday, requires five ALS ambulances. They were staffed with five ambulances, two of the five were BLS. One of the five was an ALS ambulance that contract through a third agency, not even under the contract. On Saturday, we only had five ALS ambulances in the county. Whenever they are short one or whenever there's a BLS, it is in our community that happens. So we're required to at Station One. North end of the county is the busiest county. It covers Chester and Porter, Liberty Township, which is huge, Beverly Shores, Pine Township, Birch Harbor, very huge area, very populated area. And so Saturday, all day, we had one ambulance that was stationed up north. Next closest ambulance is Valparaiso by Target, where Station Two is. That's a long ETA. So, and a special note on the Fourth of July call, the two Station One ambulances were both on the same call because the call the BLS ambulance went to require an ALS, so both ambulances, I believe, were on the same call. And then we were waiting the fourteen minutes or so, we were told for the ambulance to come from Alpo before I requested the Portage. So if you guys can think about that, I'm open to suggestions on how we can go forward to make this difference. I'm very afraid of what's going to happen in the end of the year. When the new contract is done, they did create a committee. I was not privileged to be invited to the committee or know anything about it. I did have involvement in the last contract negotiation as a representative. I am president of the Porter County Fire Association, so that is why I got to that. I am still president, was not afforded an invitation this time, nor was anybody else on the Fire Association to that committee. You know, they picked some very random people that didn't make any sense, but that's neither here nor there, I guess. So I don't know what that contract looks like. I have not seen minutes posted, and they may be out there. They're not giving any reports to the Fire Association on that stuff even after reported request. So if you guys think about that, and I can get you guys copies of that contract if you'd like to see it or if our attorney would like to review it. I don't know what we can do, but just looking for some assistance from you guys.
Thanks. I already sent that contract to our attorney last week. He has, he has taken a brief cursory review of it and noted that, while the contract does allow for BLS ambulances to be used in the county for things like non-emergency transport. As you pointed out, five fully staffed are required throughout the county, two of them at Station One, serving the north side of the county. And I know that you've reached out to a number of people over the years and haven't seen it directly addressed and corrected yet. I'm not sure what more we have to do other than put together a report and submit it to everyone at the county level that we think can, needs to have their eyes on it, make sure that everybody sees it and understands that the contract that we're currently paying for isn't being met and that we need to at least have those services met next year, if not more.
And that's my fear, is I don't know what the negotiated contract currently looks like.
Yeah.
And it's doubling in cost.
Yeah.
Are we going to get the same service we are getting now? There's a lot of questions and that we have in the emergency response world. And to be honest, it's one of the reasons why we have to run so many calls, because we have to make sure our residents are getting.
Right, right. We have, our fire department is almost always first on the scene for EMS calls and for the most part provides, the way that I understand it, the same services that, most of the same services that a BLS ambulance can provide. Same thing with our police department. We've got three full-time police officers out of our ten. Two of them are EMTs and one of them is an EMR, which is almost the same thing, right? And that's, and that's essentially the difference between a BLS ambulance and ALS, right, is EMTs versus paramedics.
Correct. So actually, our fire department is BLS non-transport certified.
Okay.
So the only difference is, is the ambulance is a transporter, as in BLS.
Right. So we do our best to offer immediate medical services to our residents while we await the ambulance services. But when they come, we need them to have a paramedic on it?
Preferably, yes.
Chief, do you have any, over the years, do you have particular communities that you've seen that are doing things very well that we might be able to reach out to and gather ideas and best practices that we might be able to consider?
I mean, our neighboring county, in LaPorte County, runs a countywide EMS system, and that's what I am a huge advocate for, but I've, they do have a public safety tax, but they run it very well. From what I see, EMS program that has fully staffed with decent equipment, with supervisors on the road, multiple supervisors on the road to go and help, plus their staffed ambulances. That's the only one I know closest, aside from, you know, City of Portage, which runs ALS ambulances. All their, not all their firemen, but their requirement now is when you get hired by the City of Portage, within so long, you have to become a paramedic, so they're running all paramedics on their ambulances. All paramedics, or not all paramedics, but paramedics on their engines. They have a phenomenal program, but that's, City of Alpo is doing, doing the same thing. The problem with small Town of Porter is we just, we don't have, I don't see that we could ever do it on our own. The revenue that you bring in is not equal to what it costs to run. If it was, I would be all over trying to figure out how to do it, but. So, but my closest model is those two agencies, or those three agencies, mainly on a county level, would be LaPorte County. Like, LaPorte County, not one fire department runs an ambulance because the county staffs the ambulances very well and how they do things, so. But I'm an outsider looking in. I'm sure every program has a little bit of problems here and there. But I just, there has to be a better way, and nobody, in my opinion, is making the effort to make it a better way. It just is getting worse.
Thank you for that. Do we have any other questions for the chief? All right. When you're done collecting that data from this past weekend and put together that report, we'll talk about how to share that with county-level officials.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Public Works, Mr. Spanier.
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Park Department, Brian.
I just wanna say thank you to everybody, especially our first responders. They busted their butts on Saturday, or Friday. Can't even think of the day, at the Fourth Fest. Thanks to the Rotary Club for sponsoring the event. BRJ Fireworks Enterprises for another great show. And it really is a, even though it takes place in the park, it's a town-wide effort from Public Works helping us get barricades out and setting things up to Police Department running the parade and Fire Department being on staff the whole day and making sure that we've got a cooling trailer there just in case if somebody falls ill, they can get inside and be inside the cool air. So really successful event all around, I thought. I didn't hear many complaints, if any, and looking forward to another one next year. And no rest for the wicked. I got a concert at the park on this coming Friday. It's the Westchester Public Library's Summer Tune Series. It'll be at seven o'clock at the East Shelter. It is the South Shore Brass Band, and it's an outdoor concert. However, there is rain in the forecast, so if we do have inclement weather, it'll be moved inside the community building. That's it for me.
Well, thank you so much. Any idea of how many people were in the park on Friday compared to years prior?
It was very bad.
It seemed, it seemed like much more to me this year than last year, but I'm not good at it.
And I only had to be mean once and stomp out one sparkler, so.
That's not bad. All right. All right, thank you so much for that, Brian. And thank you, too, for all of your hard work and your staff. It truly was a wonderful event. All right, are we ready to move on? Building Commissioner, Director of Development?
All I've really got is three contractors who paid their fees and filled all our paperwork and met our requirements.
Do we have a motion to approve Mike's three contractors that paid their fees and meet all requirements?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have any questions for Mike? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, those are approved.
And we're gonna meet Friday to discuss the paving scheduling, so I'll have that posted pretty soon.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you mind, please, reminding for the benefit of the audience, we have that Plan Commission presentation regarding Flap Grant?
Presentation, July sixteenth, six-thirty is the Plan Commission meeting. It's the Flap Grant presentation. So the entire town or whoever wants to come can view that, and it's to, over our study that we've had going on for a little over a year for trail and other amenities from Porter Beach to downtown.
What time, Mike? Six-thirty you said?
Six-thirty, yeah. It'll be at the Plan Commission meeting.
Thank you. And those, our Plan Commission meetings are all live-streamed now, right?
All, all our meetings are live.
All our meetings are live-streamed, okay. All right.
And recorded, yeah.
And recorded. Thank you so much. Old business, we have none. New business, we have the Environmental Sustainability Commission, seat vacancy. We recently received a resignation from Allison Holtman, and I would like to thank her for her dedication and commitment. And I appreciate that she chose to step down because she felt like she could no longer with her new, her work was changing, that she just could not give it the attention that she believed that it deserved. I had planned on calling someone to appoint to that seat, but did not prioritize that today, my apologies. I did wanna make sure that this person who had applied was still available and willing to take the seat before I appointed them at a public meeting. But since this is on the agenda, I would like to discuss openly amending the ordinance establishing our Environmental Sustainability Commission. There have been a few things since we, you know, when we first adopted it, it was a test run, and I think now that a few things could, should be changed in it. One of them, you know, so it's a seven-member board. We have five residents that are members and then two members that are from a Dueland School District area, high school or middle school. Those students' terms run calendar year, January to December, but their school schedule does not run that way. So when we have seniors that are leaving in the middle of the year or freshmen that aren't coming in till the middle of the year, I think that we should consider their terms lining up with the school year as opposed to the calendar year. They are also our only commission members that do not get any kind of a stipend, and I think they have clearly proven that they're willing to work very hard for the town and deserve some amount of compensation. And then, right now, how those board members are appointed is up here. And what I've been really trying to focus on doing is taking our other boards, right? So we've got Stormwater, PLAN, I don't think we included BZA. Did we? Do we have any? Do we have someone on there from BZA? We have someone on there from RDC. Can you help me?
No one from BZA.
No one from BZA, but we've got, we've got PLAN, RDC, Stormwater.
That's it. And then we have a next council member.
Oh, that's right. Okay. So anyway, what I was thinking, so Allison was a RDC member that also was serving on the ESC, and I would like to see consideration for this amendment to say that those, that three of our ESC members be appointed not by anyone on the council but be representatives from those boards, because I think it's really valuable to make sure that our ESC has, you know, a finger on the pulse of each of those other boards and vice versa. So my intention, of course, was to reach out to someone that currently serves on RDC that also expressed an interest in the ESC to replace Allison. Because I want to talk to you guys about, you know, organizing it that way and making that sort of our new normal whenever we're considering ESC appointments in the future.
I think it's a good idea, especially the part about the students bringing them in as the school year starts, I guess, or however, when you wanna do that. I guess that'd be the point, right? So that they all, you don't have that gap in there.
Yeah.
That makes a lot of sense.
I completely agree with the student amendment. I would be a little bit wary of putting a amendment in there to have them definitely be from other boards. There may be some time in the future where it would be foolish not to have that, particularly if we had somebody as talented that wasn't on those boards. So that's something you might wanna consider. You're not locking yourself into it then.
It's a good point, Dan.
Yeah, I agree.
It's good practice, too, but you don't, like you said, you don't wanna be committed to have to do that because then, like you said, if someone does, they wanna serve on two boards or something, then you're...
Just to clarify what you said, did you want one of the other boards to appoint someone or someone on the other board to be on them? Yes.
So I guess I was using those both to mean the same thing, right? Like, you know, so Plan Commission sends a representative to the BZA, for example, right? Like, you know, so, so Plan Commission sends a representative to the BZA, for example, right? And I would like to see, you know, Plan Commission do the same thing, choose someone from their commission to send over to the ESC, same thing with RDC, and same thing with Stormwater. I think, to me, those three are the most important ones. And so if we've got five total members that aren't those two students, right? Three of them being sent by three other commissions or boards and then the other two being, you know, council appointments, I think that that gives us a well-rounded balance and it keeps our boards connected with each other so that, you know, the right hand knows what the left one's doing, kind of thing.
I also think they should receive a stipend for their service on the board.
Right. So those are things to consider. If everybody's okay with reviewing an amendment, we'll work on amending it and sending out a proposal before the next meeting and consider it then, if that's okay. And I believe I saw that the open seat on the ESC, is that a presidential appointment?
I think all the ESC.
I think, I think they all are. Which is another thing that I don't really think is necessary. I think council appointments as opposed to presidential appointments is more appropriate also. So, um, that said, I'm not prepared to make that appointment tonight. I will in two more weeks, uh, once I confirm with the interested parties, uh, that they're interested. And then we'll review amending that. There? Yes? All right, thank you. That's all we have on our agenda. Do we have council comments?
Although then I think the Fourth of July parade was great and so was Hawthorne Park's fireworks. It was a great show. Lots of people.
All right. Thank you Chesterton Porter Rotary Club for all of that hard work they put into it. I know, uh, most of them, just like, just like our staff, were out there from dusk till dawn. Dawn till past dusk, I mean, same thing. It was really an excellent event. And what a wonderful send-off for Chief Allen.
It was a great send-off.
That was great. All right, anybody else going once, going twice? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you.